I want to call BOHS number six meeting to order for September eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven o'clock exactly. And let's start as we always do with the clerk's report. And is there a motion to approve the minutes from our August twenty first meeting?
Subdued.
Seconded? Seconded, okay. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections that we need to make to those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed or abstentions?
No.
Saving for absentee? Okay. Excellent. All right, are there any communications that came to any board members? Want to share? No, okay. All right, so let's move to recognition of groups and individual visitors. And we do have a group here to introduce them. I'll turn it over to Mr. Perrin.
Sure. As you know, as the board knows, we take several trips abroad. And one of our next upcoming trips is to Costa Rica. And Suzanne Grenoble is going to be one of the leaders of that trip. And helping her is a language teacher from BAMS, Kurt Johnson, who I'm thrilled that he's jumping into the BOHS abroad fray. And I'll let them kind of talk about the dates and their specific request.
Great. Just wherever you're comfortable.
So I'm Suzanne, this is Kurt. I teach French at BOHS, and I stepped into the gap when our Spanish teachers were unable to do the Costa Rica exchange this academic year. So Kurt and I have been co-organizing it, and we'll be co-leaders. We're going to be asking for approval for the trip dates and for subpay for both of us for two days. And also for a rider for insurance to cover the group while we're traveling. The dates of the Costa Rica students coming here are January nineteenth through the twenty sixth. And our dates to travel to Costa Rica are April twelfth through the twenty second. We'll be taking two days of school, and the rest of the time will be April vacation. So we're only asking for two paid sub-days for each of us. And the number of students traveling are approximately ten. And it will be approximately two thousand dollars per family, although that is up in the air until we know exactly what the costs are, which we just started the process of finding out, the trip tickets, et cetera, and transportation. That will determine what the costs will be. Do you want to add anything, Kurt?
No. The kids are excited. We've met with the parents already once. And it's always been a great experience having Costa Ricans come here. They're friendly, they're fun, they like to feed us. And then they look forward to hosting us when we go there. So it should be a great experience if things go as they have in the past and as we're planning for them to go.
This is alternating years you've done this generally, right?
Yes, every year.
Yeah, thoughts over. Sure. Thank you.
How many Costa Rican students are going to be planning on coming here?
Approximately thirteen at last count. So it's a medium-sized group.
Are there any other questions, Kurt? Anyway?
I feel that would be great if afterwards they could come in and share their experience with us.
Should I look?
Yeah.
They're very excited.
Sent a motion.
Yep.
I would move that we provide coverage for two teachers for the Costa Rican trip and also take care of the insurance finder.
I'll settle that much.
Moved and seconded? Any other thoughts, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed or abstentions? None? All right. Have a great trip.
Gracias.
All right, excellent. So that moved something off of our agenda later under new business up to now, so we took care of that. And is there a motion to enter consent agenda?
And we'll be adhering to consent agenda.
Moved and seconded? All right. So let's start with finance, building, and transportation.
All right. Finance, building, and transportation. Met on August twenty second. And we approved warrants from July twenty fourth. Warrant numbers ten six, ten seven, ten eight, ten eleven, ten twelve, ten thirteen, ten fourteen, ten fifteen, ten sixteen, ten eighteen, ten nineteen, and ten twenty. In the amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand eighty-four dollars and six cents. We also approved warrants from August seventh of ten, of numbers ten twenty-two, ten twenty-three, ten twenty-four, ten twenty-six, ten twenty-seven, ten twenty-eight, ten twenty-nine, ten thirty, and ten thirty-one. For a total of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. We also approved warrants from the twenty-first of August. Numbers ten thirty-two, ten thirty-three, ten thirty-five, ten thirty-six, ten thirty-seven, ten thirty-eight, ten thirty-nine, and ten forty. Total of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. We also did a tour of the building with Mr. Woodward. Would love to tell you about it.
Oh, that was prior. At the prior, that was before the meeting, I think.
No, it was right after.
It was right after, it was a day after that. Well, we also, as we have begun to do kind of traditionally, I guess, three or four years now, towards the end of the summer, just before school opens, we take a tour through the facility. And with a focus on work that's been done over the summer, particularly any capital improvement projects that have been completed. And we got to see quite a fair amount of things that happened over the summer. There were not any really huge things this summer, but a lot of some flooring work and work in the cafeteria. And a lot gets accomplished, of course, when you don't have the airplane full of people while you're trying to fly it. Not quite full. And we also are, and this ties into the work we completed, not completed, but we worked on it September seventh, is looking at the ex, I call it the exterior campus, that being primarily the fields. And we are spending some time on that and getting information, gathering information as to the utilization of the fields and where we, what we're looking at in the future, where we might need to make some changes. And we are continuing to work on that in both meetings. We visited, took a walk out and looked around out there during the outside tour. So it was, I always think it's the best finance committee meeting of the year because it really get to see what's going on. We can sit down on Green Street, have our meetings every other week, but until you actually stick your nose in and take a look, it's hard to really know what's going on. So we did that just prior to the last board meeting, just after the last board meeting, I think it was a day after.
It was a day after, yes.
And then for the balance of the September meeting, we did spend some time on the long-term cap, capital plan, including campus improvements, as I just stated. And another issue that we've been working on, and I would like to cite Sean's work on this, is the Whitestone property. We own three lots down there. We have been paying an association fee for these many years, about fifteen years or something like that. The property is not really anything that we're going to, originally it was intended to perhaps be a building lot. It's not a property that we could really do anything with. And however, we had that fee every year for association dues. And it's been something that kind of been a little bit of a thorn because we're, that's not our business. That's not our fiduciary responsibility is to maintain green space in a development. So we have been unable to resolve that until just recently, as a result of Sean's meeting with folks down there. Some of the residents, not the association, but residents stepped forward and said that they would be willing to cover the fees if we were be willing to not do anything with the land for a period of time. And we're putting together a memo of understanding accordingly. So it'll mean that we still have title to the land, but we get out from under that fee and they have some green space up there. And hopefully, this is an editorial comment, I guess, but hopefully, maybe some of the other residents will see fit to join in that effort to cover the fees. And then once again, Sean bird-dogged this. All I've done is complain about it for about ten years. I really do anything. Sean took it over and we got that squared.
It was a group effort by the whole finance committee, and everybody had an input.
Well, everybody did contribute, yeah. And that's primarily the business of the September seventh meeting and August, I never get that date out, the twenty-second, twenty-second meeting.
Thank you. WSCSU Finance?
We have not met since the last meeting. We'll meet again on Wednesday, October fourth. We're meeting at five fifteen at Landmark College, I just learned. And the full WSCSU meeting will be at six thirty, is what I have down. One thing that we'll do, both in the finance committee and then at the SU meeting, at least I'm thinking we will, is looking at some of the executive roles that the SU Finance Committee will, might be taking on and continuing to take on. And I don't know if you're going to talk more about it or not, but the hope, as I mentioned the last time, that everyone, not just the three voting members, would come to that meeting in part will be, from what I understand, just sort of talking about how we communicate about issues and reconnecting a little bit. And so we'll be at Landmark College, and I believe there'll be a facilitator there.
Yes, there will be. So on October fourth, Finance Committee will meet, Brattleboro Town School Board will have a short meeting. We will all meet, we're inviting all board members from all boards to come that evening because, as Russ just said, we're going to have an outside facilitator come and do some work with us, possibly setting some norms. But having us move together as a cohesive group. We had started some of that work now that we are getting to know each other through the Act forty-six process. So we wanted to continue to get to know each other, how we work together, some of the struggles that each individual board might be having, but also the celebrations that we have at our sites. So we'll do some regular business, but also some other work together then.
Just, do, I don't know if you know yet, do you know where on campus it's going to be?
I do not.
But that'll go out in the evening on the seminar?
Yes, yes. I assume it'll be right next to the dining hall because that's a big building.
Big space, yeah. Excellent. So that's it?
Yeah, and I assume that the three members can make it.
And?
I will not be able to make it.
Okay. So we should make sure that somebody.
Are you my alternate?
I'm your last, last child, yeah, if you can't make it.
Okay.
Well, I think we should just make sure we assign someone tonight.
You just make sure, and then I'm hoping.
I am the alternate.
So at least we have the three, but if we can have, I guess, eight of the nine, or as close as we can. Of course, we're missing a Brattleboro slot too, so maybe seven out of the eight.
Great. Well, we have the alternate, and you think you could be there, Rob?
Yes.
Okay, so we should be outside. For the, at least the three voting members, and then hopefully the rest of us can be there as well. All right, planning and policy. Has not met since our last meeting, know that. And Teacher Curriculum Committee also has not met. BAMS Committee?
BAMS also has not met since our last meeting.
WRCC? Yeah. We have a committee of the board, so. Look at, look at you. Have you got any?
I don't think since the last one, though.
Okay.
We did that approval, won approval, but that was reported out of the last meeting.
Yes, I'm pretty sure.
Time flies.
All right, WSCSU Act Forty-six Study Committee. We met last week here. It was a pretty productive meeting. It was finalizing, going over some recommendations and things like that for the, and the plan for moving forward. There's a meeting this week in Montpelier. I almost said Barry, and I was like, no, that's not right, it's Montpelier. In Montpelier, at the high school, this week, where they're going to look at the articles of agreement from the four towns. And then it'll be up to the State Board to make a decision about the next steps. We have, we also set some dates for meetings in the individual towns after that, to have individual meetings to talk about the merger, assuming that it goes through, or if it doesn't go through, sort of what's the next steps. We went through the, we were very positive and optimistic that things will go through. So we've set a bunch of dates for those. And different members of the Act Forty-six Study Committee meetings are going to be at most of those meetings to help answer questions and go over all those things. So that's been set. I think I missed a page earlier that night, so.
The only thing that, and I've been saying this at every meeting I go to, just to get it on camera so everybody out there can hear it, that petitions for the new unified district will be available September twenty-first at the local town halls. If you're running as a local board member, you need thirty signatures from your town. If you're running for an at-large, you need sixty signatures, and it can be from any of the four towns. And they need to be returned by October second. So just want to make sure that everybody has that information.
Thank you. So that was for Act Forty-six, and we'll, after Wednesday, hopefully we'll know more relatively soon after that meeting. All right, is there anything else for consent agenda? There a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved? Moved and seconded? All those in favor of moving consent agenda?
Aye.
Posed or abstentions? None. Excellent. All right, so let's move to administrative reports. Let's start this out with the high school.
Sure. Thank you. I have several items today. First of all, in news last week, we had our open house. And we welcomed a lot of parents to open house, and they followed an abbreviated version of their Child School Day. Got a chance to meet their teachers, got a chance to walk around the school. I did a brief introduction of our new administrative team and talked a little bit about proficiency-based learning, as well as the changes to the athletic and co-curricular code of conduct. So we packed a lot into one night. Next week, I'll be out of the building Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, traveling to Washington DC to represent Vermont in the NASP Principal of the Year. Hoo-ha. And the highlight is I do have meetings scheduled with Senators Leyton Sanders and also Congressman Welch. And I'm going to talk a little about our local concerns, as well as concerns nationally. Also, I do want to give a shout out to True North Granola, who are giving me little kind of gift bags of granola to hand out. I don't know anybody that works at that place, but yeah, anyway, I want to give a shout out to them for supporting that. You know, I wanted to get a chance to kind of represent local products, and so people see a little bit of Brattleboro. I have a letter from our trainer, and I meant to run off multiple copies, and there's a nice paper jam. And it's from Jaclyn Penzen. And she just wants to express her gratitude for the board for supporting the purchase of the Gator. She's used it a lot. She kind of delineates here some of the stuff she can carry now. She can now carry ice, she can carry a portable table, she can carry splints, as well as an AED. So that, in addition to the fact that she can move from one place to another rapidly, really speaks highly. She's very happy with the Gator, she's glad that we bought it for her, she's grateful to support. She did kind of delineate for me also that she oversees three football teams, three girls soccer teams, three boys soccer teams, two field hockey teams, and boys and girls cross-country just in the fall. And so she is all over the place.
Yeah, she needs a Gator.
She does. And, you know, I don't know how much student transportation she's done in terms of injured students, but I do know she's using it judiciously, and she's doing a great job overall. I'm really lucky to have her, so. Our YAST class, which is Youth and Adults Transforming Schools Together, they're heading out for a field trip. On the twenty-first and twenty-second, they're doing overnight field trip. Ben Lor is the teacher of that course. And they're taking Bill Jan, who's a counselor here. And Bill is going to drive the bus, but he's also going as a second facilitator. And what they'll do is they'll be meeting with other schools from around the state that have the same course and talking about how do you advocate within your school, how do you do research within your school? And it looks to be a really full two-day agenda. The reason I bring that up is I would like to ask that we have a TCC meeting at the first meeting in October because they would like to meet with TCC. And they kind of want to outline their year. And that will be followed very quickly with a request to meet with the whole board. But they want to start with TCC and then meet with the whole board, so if we could let them have some airtime with TCC in early October, that would be great.
So it'll be October seventh?
I believe it is, yeah.
And then we meet just before this meeting?
Yeah.
Do we know the time?
Usually we do, we've done in the past, we've done at six o'clock.
Yeah, I think an hour would be good for them, to give them an hour. So I'll let them know.
And I'll make sure that it gets on the agenda and gets more and more frequently.
Great, thanks. In social studies, if you tuned into WTSA on Saturday mornings, Bill Holiday, I don't know if anybody knows him either, is his film music and history class, his seminar, is doing a project called Tracking the Tracks. And every Saturday, they're going to be presenting a thirty-minute show on TSA where they'll actually kind of talk about the music. They'll talk about the social movements behind the music, and they'll talk about the context that the music was created in. I listened to the first podcast, it is linked from the TSA website now. If you get a chance, check that out. And the kids are doing a fantastic job with that, and I want to give kudos to Mr. Holiday and those students. So Saturday mornings, eight-thirty.
So I'd like to jump to your report, but I heard the second one was passed Saturday, it was phenomenal. I was going someplace, heard the beginning of it, got to the parking lot where I was going, and I sat in the parking lot for twenty minutes and listened to the rest of it because they were doing such a good job. And it's not a genre that I was all that into or whatever else, but it was just, they were doing such a great job. I sat in the parking lot for twenty minutes and listened to it.
Yeah, it's fun.
Yeah, it was great.
Also, last week, the state re-released SBACK scores. And I wanted to take a couple of minutes and share with the board a little bit of longitudinal data. We don't have a lot of longitudinal data, but I thought I'd share what we have. We began giving the SBACKs in two thousand and fifteen, and we administered them three times. The first time was considered a baseline by the state, and so they really didn't track our results. They just kind of, you know, you remember taking that practice test in the next room, you sat down at the computer. So the first round in two thousand and fifteen was really a kind of get to know the test, get to know the process. But then we started to track the data in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen. So I would draw your attention to the first box. And, you know, as I said, two years isn't really enough to declare a trend or a pattern. But if it's a positive one, I'd like to declare a trend. Not really. But if you take a look at math, you notice in two thousand and sixteen, we were twenty-five percent. Of our students were either proficient, or the term is proficient with distinction. And in two thousand and seventeen, up to thirty-one percent, so we had a positive change there. Certainly, we're still lagging behind the state average, but there is some movement there. English Language Arts, over that two-year period, you know, went from a fifty-three, state average was fifty-seven, and we jumped up nine percentage points to sixty-two. And the state average was fifty-nine. So again, you know, we're moving in the right direction. Again, I would not call two years' worth of data enough to kind of say, to make definitive statements, but I think it's good to see. The next table takes sixteen and seventeen data and breaks it out the way the state breaks it out in the categories of proficient with distinction, proficient partially and substantially below. And I have to caution the board that proficient in this context has nothing to do with proficient in every other context when we talk about proficiency-based learning. So it's the same word used very differently. And again, that was really just to kind of show you the breakout. You notice in math, our students that are proficient with distinction, you know, one of five percent. It is interesting to note that this year's senior class, or the class that took it last March, that was one of our smaller classes, our senior class of a hundred and sixty-five students. So that sample size is pretty small as well. And then for your comparison are the SAT scores over the same period of time, actually three years' worth. And you can kind of see where we lie in our SAT scores over that two-year period. The reason I shared that is the SAT really is a national test that's pretty norm-referenced. And so I thought it was important to share that. So that's our data for two years. The fly in the ointment, though, this year is that we've gotten word that we're not administering the SBACK to eleventh graders. So instead, we're going to be administering the SBACK to ninth graders. So in March or thereabouts, you know, we're going to test window again. We'll administer that to the students who are new to the high school. Which I think is great feedback if you want to look at their middle school experience, but it doesn't offer a lot of, you know, look back at high school because it's literally, you know, one English course and one math course. So while, you know, I was pleased to see that we were moving in a positive direction for two years. You know, we're going to be back at ground zero.
Why did they make the change?
I don't know. I couldn't tell you.
I feel like with this testing stuff, they just keep doing it just so that you can't get actual statistics that show that you're making the improvement because just when you start doing it, they either change the test or something else. And the years that I've been on the board, that's been sort of the function. It's been, every couple of years, we were changing the test because it's a new standardized test we're using instead, or a different group that we're testing, or a different time or something, and it just doesn't. So we don't get any good data.
Right.
But they hold us accountable to the data.
Right. But, you know, that said, you know, I do think our staff and our students work pretty hard on these tests. You know, traditionally, whether it's been the pass test, or the new standard directions exams, or kneecaps, it has been a challenge because when we ask, you know, the test is really an evaluation of the school, not an evaluation of the students. We don't put it on transcripts. That kind of changes the way students regard the test. So two years ago, we actually began something different where, you remember that I asked permission, like three years ago, we released students in grades nine, ten, and twelve, bought the juniors lunch for two days, and then we did the testing for just the juniors in the building. That seemed to help juniors take the test seriously. It certainly sent a strong message that we value the test, it sent that same message to the staff as well. We've also done class meetings to kind of talk about the reasons for the test. And we'll continue to do that with ninth graders this year. So I just wanted you to kind of see this because you maybe asked about our SBACK scores and how we're doing. And, you know, I wish I could say we're above the state average and everything, but I can say, based on this limited data, we're moving in the right direction. And we'll continue to see how things develop. It is interesting to note that in New Hampshire, they don't give the SBACK, instead they use the SATs for all students as their benchmark standardized test. And that, as we all know, has some, certainly has some direct investment for students. Last, I got some disturbing news, literally a few minutes ago. One of our PE teachers, Mia Sweet, has asked to resign. And her husband has a job opportunity elsewhere, and so she is resigning effective October sixth. So tomorrow, we're going to begin a search for a PE teacher. If you know anybody, let me know. So we're going to start that search tomorrow. I'll be asking for somebody to serve my committee. And I would ask at this time for the board to accept Ms. Sweet's resignation.
I move that we accept Mia Sweet's resignation.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Excellent. So let's move down the table to the Career Center. And for everyone that doesn't know, this is Drew, he's the Assistant Career Center Director. I think it's the first time you've been to one of our meetings.
It is.
So if you want to maybe just kind of introduce yourself to the board a little bit, that'd be great before you do your report.
All right, I'd be happy to. My name is Drew McDowell, and I'm the Assistant Director of the Career Center and also the Director of Adult Ed. I have been working within the Southern Vermont community within education for the last twenty years. I was coming here after a three-year stint at Landmark College within career services there. So through that, certainly became familiar with a lot of the, you know, educational and workforce initiatives that link a little secondary ed to post-secondary ed. Prior to that, I had worked for the state of Vermont as a voc rehab transition counselor within Windsor County, and I did that for four years. Prior to that, I was a program director at Kendall Farm, and, you know, also had a stint as the recreation director for the town of Brattleboro. So I feel I come to you with a knowledge of the community, certainly a knowledge of the many networks and, and systems that, you know, link up to public education, and, you know, an awareness from a practitioner's standpoint, from, you know, and, you know, kind of an external standpoint, and really very happy to be here within the place that has the most resources for the most kids. So, that's my introduction. Kind of getting into some of the goings-on, we two participated in the open house last week, so it was a good event for us, got to meet a lot of parents. And we had a surprising amount of parents who made it up to the tick in the rain, and, you know, had, you know, a lot of really nice connections with the parents who were new to the career center programs through the exploratory programs. And so, you know, that was a, a good chunk of our parents. So the things going on at campus, our construction and architecture program is working with our horticulture program to a sectioned-off part of our building where we have some of our raised beds, they're putting a fence in there, and just kind of working a little bit more to cultivate some of that land. Our construction crew is headed off to the New Hampshire Construction Career Day, so our groups are starting to get off campus. The Future Business Leaders of America group is also off to the Big E for an annual trip as well, so that kind of brings up to date some of the kind of early in the season activities. As far as adult education, you know, I think this is going to be a pretty big transition semester for adult ed. We had a significant amount of instructors that did not return. I decided not to go out and try to hire new folks within the time, within the time period that I had, because I think we're fortunate that we have a couple regional events that are happening that will help us kind of redefine and realign what adult ed is doing to stakeholders within the community. So the Wyndham Worknet is kind of, you know, entering the Southern Vermont fray as something that could be compared to a workforce investment board, which is what, you know, by state design, that's what the adult ed coordinator should be linked to, so that's something that hasn't really been happening with adult ed. So that's going to give us a really good opportunity to survey stakeholders within the community and get a better idea of the kind of programs that, you know, social services, you know, anyone who's doing career services, you know, on a state level, on a community level, what, what they're looking for. Of course, we're going to, you know, gravitate towards industry-recognized credentials, but for now, we're going to take the time to really get a better lay of the land and, you know, look to go into a little bit of a redesign mode. So some of the stuff, so one of the other big events that we're going to be doing this semester is a career pathways, a, a program of study, kind of community engagement day, where we're going to have our staff up at the Wyndham Regional Career Center. And those program of study, or those, of, of program advisory groups that really need to be strengthened, connect more with industry, connect more with some of the folks who are participating in our co-op program, to get more information about really how to design that career pathway system. You know, within that, adult ed plays a role, a regional post-secondary opportunity plays a role, but really looking at what each player within that whole pathway system, you know, what each player is going to deliver as far as the skills that our regional workforce is looking for. So that higher measure of engagement there, I think will really look to define really the future of the, of adult ed program, and I'm looking forward to that. I think the, you know, the Ed2Go online training module can be built up considerably, and I think that could be a resource for, you know, local business, you know, as an online training tool. I think with proper onboarding, I think more of our local population can access that. I think some of our best, you know, participants within adult ed are the students of our parents, and I think that kind of multi-generational support within education, students who are going to high school do perform better when their parents are also seeking education, and I think there's some great opportunities to get within the schools, within the supervisory union, to really promote, you know, what we have here and what we want to cultivate. I think there's some technological needs, and within all that framework with the, you know, with the advent of personal learning plans, I think that there's, you know, more communication that we can provide to, you know, high school guidance counselors, to students that are going to be local, on additional education that students can get through planning, you know, right here locally, through the career center. So I look forward to kind of really promoting that, you know, as well, and, and kind of getting those kind of continuing education-type frameworks for young people. Adult ed has been really primarily populated from the data that I've read, you know, by older folks, so I think I want to make it more accessible to those students who are going to stay in this community, and, and, you know, might need to link up more to post-secondary, you know, of, of education, you know, as college at a later date, but what are those, you know, kind of building blocks towards that? And I also think that within the adult ed, we have to get the programming on a schedule so that state funding sources can, can fund it. Our, our timelines are too short for a variety, for the voc rehabs, for the Department of Labor's, to, you know, to, you know, kind of have their counseling process and funding process aligned with what we have to offer. So as we get more industry-recognized credentials within that, you know, adult ed package will also be looking to extend those timelines so that people are more aware of what we're doing, months, months, months in advance of what the current timetable is.
Thank you, Ricky.
Thank you.
Excellent, awesome. All right, let's move down to the middle school.
Hey, hi, everyone. Say a couple, a couple things, I don't think we've had a meeting since we started school, so school year's begun very well, the middle school. From my perspective, we had a really successful in-service. Unique thing we did this year were teachers who went to the Middle Grades Institute at the end of June. We planned our in-service together in June, we planned it, and then the teachers led the entire in-service when we got back. So teachers teaching teachers, it was really powerful, and I was really proud of them. They worked really hard to prepare it and did a great job carrying it out. And the work we did was related to developmental designs, which is an approach to, a school-wide approach to many different things, but kind of behaviors in the classroom, advisory, how we, how we present information and redirect students, a lot of different things, so we're pretty excited about that, and there'll be a follow-up in November with developmental designs. And, and the start's been smooth because the teachers have worked really hard and the students have, have really been great so far, really happy. Teams did potluck dinners to welcome back to the four teams, so there were four different evenings where we hosted some type of little potluck, one team did a little ice cream social, and they were really well-attended, so we're happy with that. A lot of families in here for, for a couple hours or an hour. Just highlighting a few changes that we're, we're kind of doing this year, these are reflected in our action plan. We, we changed our master's schedule around, this was a work of our leadership team last year, to include a thing called the Skills Block, which replaces our old former Galaxy period, and the Skills Block is in its infancy as far as carrying it out, but really happy with it so far and the work of the team that put it together. We shifted the time to the middle of the school day during the core academic time, it's a half an hour of focused academic interventions, and we're basing that work on the student data, their performance. Our focus, another focus this year is integrated interdisciplinary work with teams, so not just teaching social studies in the social studies classroom, and then math only in the math classroom, trying to do some more, whether it's project-based work or inner, inner kind of, it's hard to describe the term, but interdisciplinary, combining subjects and making something more real-world relevant to, to students. Using common themes and trying to teach transferable skills, all those things you've been hearing about. Trying to continue to take more student-led, student-centered approaches, we'll be doing student-led conferences in November again, and pretty excited about that. Personalized learning plans, moving to proficiency-based learning, so those are some of our focuses this year. Since Steve brought up the, the SBACK scores, I don't spend a lot of time trying to crunch how we're comparing to the rest of the state, focus on kind of doing what we can to, to support student learning with things like Skills Block and core, core instruction, but our results, I think, are pretty, pretty decent. Seventh grade English Language Arts were eight percent above the state average for proficient or above. The seventh grade math, we were six percent above the state average. In the eighth grade math, we're eight percent above the state average. And interesting statistic there is twenty-seven percent of our students were proficient with distinction, which is a level four, which is really, really challenging to obtain. So twenty-seven percent of the eighth graders last year were, were level four, pretty impressive. And actually, that number's higher than the, the students who are level three, so the ones who are getting math really get it. So eight percent above state average there, and then for eighth grade, English Language Arts were five percent above the state average, so, you know, hard work from pre-K to eight, well, to twelve, really, and starting to get some good results. Some, the last kind of bit of, sort of, well, it's exciting news, but there's a little challenge with it, where Team Draco, one of the four teams, has been planning a trip to the Cape for probably six months, done tons of work fundraising, and we connected with this place called Cape Cod Sea Camps, which is in Brewster, beautiful place, and the three-day trip was scheduled for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of this week. Well, if you watch the weather forecast for the Cape and the islands, it's not good. So, so we're having to make some quick, tough decisions about the trip, and we decided to postpone it until Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, which creates a lot of trouble for people who are driving and those kind of things. Some people now can't go, the adult chaperones, we're trying to, working really hard to, to reschedule it, but it was best for the quality of the trip and the safety of, of everybody going that we postponed, so. So we'll, we'll figure it out, the team's working really hard. So it's exciting, it's a really exciting trip for the kids, but it'll disappoint them that Jose won't go away. So, that's it.
Great, thanks so much.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think...
I just wanted a little clarification, the skills, you said the Skills Block replaces the Galaxy.
Yep.
The Skills sounds somewhat like the ACE Block in high school, is that...
Different, similar concept of supporting students who need, need some help, but it's...
But wasn't the Galaxy more of an exploratory type of...
Uh, not, not necessarily, it was, it had a strong academic focus, it was at the end of the day, and it was a little longer, and we redesigned it to have all staff teaching so we could have smaller groups of kids to really focus in on groups of seven and nine students. And, and we wanted to redesign the focus with a real academic, just reemphasize the academic structure and putting data behind those, those groupings, so the teams meet and place students in groups based on their performance, on things like SBACK and some of the standardized testing that we do. So they place kids who have similar needs in with a teacher, and they're, and they're being, they're taught, they're specifically taught a skill that they are lacking, that they're not proficient in, and that's based on specific data that we have. So that's more detailed and more structured than our previous Galaxy period. So it's more involved in that, but I don't know if that made any sense or not.
Well, yeah, I guess I didn't ever quite understand Galaxy, and I thought it was more of exploratory in different areas, but, and I see the logic of it based on the direction that we're going, that this would fit.
Yeah, well, I mean, the fact that you didn't understand the Galaxy, I think that was part of the issue, is that there wasn't a lot of clarity on what exactly are we doing in Galaxy, and how are we measuring the results of that? You know, it's, it, it just needed more attention, and that was our response, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Central office?
Yes, I just have one thing, and I'm surprised none of these three said anything, buses have been challenging this year. And I'm bringing this up because as board members, you may get calls from parents, or I have gotten calls from parents. I met with representatives from First Student Today, we're putting in some changes, we will see throughout the week if those changes make any difference, and if not, I will be back meeting with First Student. But it seems like this year worse than in the past years, there have been late buses and just issues everywhere.
Is it just issues here, or is it issues across the whole district? Not just us, it's everybody?
It's just...
That's good, I guess. All right, excellent. All right, so that's it for our administrative report. Under unfinished business, the, the one thing we have to do is to address the school board vacancy that we have from Brattleboro, and we're going to go into an executive session just to talk about some specifics. What I've been asked for us to do is to make a recommendation, two people have applied to be appointed to the position, the Brattleboro Town School Board will actually do the appointment, they have asked us for a recommendation from them. So I have met with both people, and it kind of came up really fast, and so we, so it was just, I met with them individually, and I apologize if anybody is upset by that, but I just felt like, let's just get this done and get, get to the point where we can make a recommendation after tonight's meeting, and then we will, and then Wednesday night is when the Brattleboro Town Board meets, and they were planning on making their appointment at that meeting, so that for our next meeting, we will have somebody in our open spot. Seth?
After our executive session, will we come back into open session and say who we have...
I don't think we'll do that, I think it's just gonna, to be honest, I'm not really sure what's the best way to go, and I'm open to hear from...
Since the Brattleboro Town Board is the one that has to do the appointment, I don't think it would be appropriate for our, for us to mention a name.
Yeah, I wasn't planning on mentioning a name, but I didn't have a solid, that's a good, I, I kind of felt that way, but I was like, is that the right reason?
Because, I mean, it's really not our call, they're just...
No, no, they, they're just asking for our, our recommendation, based on the fact that there was two candidates. I think in the past years, whenever there's been an open position on pretty much any board, they haven't had the, the, the need to, to pick between two. It's always been one person put, put their name in, so it was kind of an easy go. So I think we'll just come back out of executive session just long enough to...
To adjourn.
To adjourn if, unless there's something else that comes before us. Does that make sense? So I'm gonna dissolve the regular meeting and have us go into it.
We aren't going to do new business now.
The new business, the only thing was the Costa Rica trip, which we already took care of.
Oh, well, I would like to query the superintendent...
Okay.
As to what are the implications, implications of Act eighty-five for our school district?
I do not know Act eighty-five, so it'll be something I'll have to research, you can back me up.
Okay.
It's not an act I know. Anybody else know Act eighty-five?
It, it's the, the, the act where schools are having to give back money to the state.
Oh, the health reimbursement.
Yes.
I didn't know it was Act eighty-five. Frank has been working on that, and he, I will put that in the notes that you would
Frank has been working on that, and he, I will put that in the notes that you would like to know. At this point, he is working on how much each town will have to send back. He did not seem alarmed, so that, to me, is a good sign, but I will put it in the notes and Frank can, can report out.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Okay, is there anything else before we go into executive session? Seeing nothing, no, we go ahead and enter exec, yes, executive session? I don't think the administration needs to stick around if they don't want to. And Ian, if you, you can...
I, choice is yours. I've filmed a lot of open meetings.
Yeah.
I would, I, I'm not a lawyer. I recommend that you take a vote to an executive session.
Yep.
I'm also going to stay here, and I'm going to record you coming back in open session.
All right.
Just because I've had experiences, not with your board, but with other boards.
All right.
If that's okay with you.
That's fine.
All right.
All right, I move we go into executive session?
Okay. Do you want to move the second in? All in favor?
For, for a school board matter, I guess.
Yeah, we come under and run.
It's a school board personnel.
It's a school board personnel, school board personnel.
That's personnel, right.
Yeah. All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right. So why don't we go in the other room? Oh. So we are returning to open session at 8:05 after having an executive session to discuss the open school board vacancy on VUHS board. So we're now back in open session, and...
And no action is taken?
There's no action taken yet.
As a result?
Was the discussion, yeah?
All right. I move that we adjourn second in.
Move in second in? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Excellent, thank you all.